Hello everybody, my name is Bill Brad Bird and I am running for position nine. It's one of the at-large seats for city council. I'm a community activist and I've worked for the last decade on a number of issues related to zoning and land use, affordable housing, and making sure that we are protecting the small businesses. A few years ago, they tried to put a shopping mall down in Little Saigon and I helped that the 170 small businesses there organize to fight that off. I'm also one of the people who helped put together the proposal for district elections because we felt that the community's voice was not being heard at city hall and this was the best way to get more direct representation. So you now have a district person that you should be able to make sure they're hearing your voice and if they aren't, you can elect them out of office. Thank you very much, we'll talk more.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Burgess and I'm running for at-large position eight on the city council. And I'm running for reelection because I want to keep doing what I've been doing for you and all of the other people of Seattle, getting good things done. Like universal preschool for all of our three and four-year-olds. Like passing the minimum wage and the paid sick leave law so that every worker in Seattle can care for themselves and their families. I was the one who wrote the legislation three years ago that created the city's office for immigrant and refugee affairs. So that we could welcome new Americans to our city and help them get started with their families, with their businesses, whatever they choose to do. And right now, we're working in my office on creating a welcome back center in Seattle. Several cities in the western United States and Washington state have these welcome back centers. And they're designed to help immigrants and refugees to our country update their credentials and verify credentials from their home country so that they can work here in the profession of their choice.
My name is Deborah Zekardis and I am a longtime Queen Anne resident. And I'm District Seven which goes from Magnolia all the way down to Pioneer Square and from South Lake Union and some, a little bit up on Capitol Hill, down to the waterfront. I am a longtime business owner. I currently work at Boeing but I've owned several businesses. And my husband has a maritime industry business with a partner that's 20 years old now. I have been an activist in my community for 40 years. I've worked to improve the neighborhood and work with children. I understand the needs of all of the neighborhoods. I've lived in several neighborhoods including Beacon Hill, Madison Park, and Magnolia and along with Queen Anne. So I know, I don't know how many people here are from, know people who live in that, in my district, District Seven? Yay, okay. So when you're talking to them, tell them that you met me. Thank you.
I'm very focused on making sure that we have very good training programs. I would like to see us increase our family and education monies, levy monies, to focus on job training, mentorship, and apprenticeship programs. We have a number of industries here in Seattle that are facing aging workforce and they have very good jobs, very well-paying jobs, like in the maritime industry. And I would like to see greater connections between these industries and the immigrant community, young kids coming out of high school or they're in high school, to get the type of training that puts them into a career path through a good training, a good paying job. I would also like to make sure that we're providing alternatives to kids, that from the alternatives of gangs and drugs and violence. I think it is appalling, it's a tragedy of what's happening to the youth and I think we need to provide greater alternatives to them. The school district has failed kids, people of color. We need to correct that. The city should be stepping forward to help encounter that balance. Right, okay, yeah. So I think we need to be working with the industries to ask them to help. What I find, one thing I find is really distressing is the high-tech and biotech industries that are expanding here in Seattle are importing their workers. They are not hiring kids out of South End. We have a huge gap in training into technology. Now there are some groups that are working very hard to correct that. For example, David Harris and Y. King Garrett in the central area are providing technology and training alternatives for young black men. Need to expand that. Thank you.
I would mention two areas to answer your question, James. First, as I mentioned in my opening comments, we're in the process of creating a welcome back center here in Seattle which will allow individuals who immigrate to the United States to verify credentials that they may have earned in their home country and then to apply those to jobs here in our city. And that's a very important assistance that we would help these individuals do that so that they can open up job opportunities. The second I would mention is the area of preschool and childcare. The measure that Seattle voters approved last November to create high-quality preschool in Seattle also said that we should build the professional workforce around childcare and preschool. And so the city will open a training center. That measure also pays for all tuition for individuals who want to get either an AA degree or a bachelor's degree in early learning education. The city will pay the tuition so that that individual can go to school. And we're also elevating the salary of individuals in the preschool. So the Seattle preschool program, which just opened its first 15 classrooms last month, will pay those preschool teachers on par with our Seattle Public School K-12 teachers at well, which is a huge increase in compensation for individuals in the early learning childcare area. Which is an important area especially among our immigrant and refugee population because there's a lot of home-based family childcare centers. We will be opening a pilot with those individuals as well to see if we can get their education credentials up, get their pay up, so it becomes a true profession for them long-term.
I would like to see apprenticeships be more available. The contact, work with all of the major corporations in the city, all the high-tech corporations, the biotech, and get apprenticeships. I would like to also see representatives from those companies come to all of our schools starting in grade school all the way through high school to teach the kids about the importance of getting educated in the sciences, give the kids a vision of what they can accomplish in the future. I would also, there was a discussion earlier today about a citywide job database. I would really support that. Also, the money that we're putting into a jail for children, I would like to see that money taken out and put into job training for, and also counseling for middle school and high school children. I completely support the Professional Immigrants Act so that people who have training as accountants in finance, in medicine, that they can come here and get recertified without having to spend a lot of money doing it and a lot of time doing it. So that they can go back into their communities and help service them. And I would like, I know that we're doing districting and I'm District Seven so I go all the way down into Pioneer Square. Sort of stops at the international district but this is, just because we're doing districts does not mean that we are not concerned about the entire city. It's a one big team, one big family.
Thank you, I'm so sorry for being late. So my name is John Grant, I'm running for position eight, a citywide seat. I'm the former executive director of the Tenants Union of Washington State and my work there, you know, really informed how much we need more affordable housing, how much we need to fight against displacement that we're seeing left and right. One of the campaigns that I was really proud of being involved in was stopping the stepping forward proposal by the Seattle Housing Authority which would have raised tenants' rents by 400% and disproportionately pushed out immigrants and refugees. I've been a longtime ally to this community and I would be a strong advocate for your interests on city hall. Thank you very much for your time, I look forward to your questions.
... for your responses candidates. Our next question is in regards to education. As you know, many of our students do not fit in a traditionally structured classroom. To prevent the school-to-prison pipeline, we must be creative in meeting the needs of these students. How would you work with the Seattle Public Schools School Board to ensure that all students have a fair chance to succeed by eliminating current disparities and ending the opportunity gap?
I'm Deborah. That's okay.
Let's start with Deborah.
Yeah, I'm sitting here. My apologies. I would like to see the number of school board members from the North End decrease and the number of school board members from the South End increase. There's a disparity. Right now, there are four, I believe there's four positions north of the Ship Canal and three south. The majority of the students are south of the Ship Canal. So I think that we would, I think we'd like, I'd like to see a referendum in the city to change that because the school board's not going to do it on their own. I would like to see more training for teachers of color and bring up their skill levels. Some of the teachers have not got the skill levels that teachers in the North End seem to have versus teachers in the South End. So I think that there needs to be some work on that. I think that we need to work with the legislature to get, we need to put pressure on that legislature to change the classroom size. I would also like to see bus passes for all children so that they can get to and from school. A lot of children are paying for the bus out of their own pocket and they don't, they get to choose between a bus to go to school or food and clothing. And I don't think that's right. I think that we need to have an advocate unit to help parents so that they can work with their children and actually become active in the schools. The schools in the North End have more parent participation than the schools in the South End and that's causing a problem. So if we have to support the parents to get here by providing childcare so that they can have a safe place to leave the younger children so they can come and participate in the older children's school, we need to do that. And I think that we need to talk to the school principals and staff as a, as a city council and identify what they see as the problems and concerns that need to be addressed.
I spent most of my first eight years on the city council dealing with issues around children and young people. That's why I advocated so strongly to fully fund the Nurse Family Partnership which is a public health home visitation program for first-time low-income moms and dads. A highly successful program that begins early, begins early in pregnancy and lasts until the child is age two. Education outcomes for those far higher than their peers who were not in that program. That's why I fought for the Seattle preschool program. We know that kids that go to high, kids that go to high-quality preschool are going to do better in school than their peers that don't and they're going to have much, much, much lower involvement in the criminal justice system. The school-to-prison pipeline should shame all of us. It's terrible. And there's a lot of reasons why that happens. Most significantly, it's because of the legacy of slavery and racism in our country, the structural evils that we have in our society. Those we need to talk about openly and address openly. And programs like Nurse Family Partnership, like the preschool program, like bilingual education and culturally competent classrooms for kids are so important. All of these things are interconnected one way or the other. And I think the approach that the city has taken and how we have nudged the school district further and further along to deal with these systemic problems is something that we need to continue to do at the city council as well.
One of the most exciting things that came out of the recent and successful teacher strike was the establishment of racial social equity teams in each school. And the union said, you know, as part of our settlement, you know, our agreement, we want at least 30 teams to address the impacts of disproportionate discipline against students of color. And actually have each school analyze and address what that looks like and why it happens and try to stem it from happening. I think that that was an excellent step in the right, in the right direction but we also have to look at what the city can do. The city, you know, there's been studies done and if you can actually give students and young folks free transit fare to get to school, their academic scores just go through the roof. Because they have a means to get to class and their economic status isn't preventing them from being able to go to classrooms, to class. So I think the city could implement a low fare or even a free ride program for many low-income students so that they can get to class. The second thing, or third thing rather, is addressing homelessness. I put forward a proposal to build 5,000 units in five years of very low-income affordable housing. We, if a student doesn't have stability in their housing, they will fail at school. We need to actually make sure that folks have stable housing so that they can succeed as students. And if you take care of, take care of folks' basic needs, we can actually see tremendous improvements in their academic achievements.
I agree with many of the points that John had said and the prior speakers had said. But I think we have another issue and that has to do with not only racism but classism. One of the problems with the school districts is, we see so many private schools. And wealthy people take their kids and put them into private schools and the public schools are left for the working class and poorer classes. And what happens then is because it's very difficult for those schools to raise the funds to support the school district. As we know, the school district is not providing, the state is not providing money to the school district and the school district is not providing equity. And that is amplified where we see racial disparities in neighborhoods. My kids go to Seattle Public Schools and the Leschi School was the school that we go to. The Leschi School, the Leschi neighborhood is half-white, black. In the school, it's mostly the black kids. Because the white people take their kids and put them into private school. And then that makes it very difficult for the school district, for the school and the PTA to support the kids. It's very difficult to raise money. But we've, but we've worked together, myself and other parents, worked together to address some of those disparities. So for example, we had two programs, a Montessori program and a contemporary program. And the black kids were in the contemporary program and the middle-class white kids were in the Montessori program. And we said that is unjust, it's not equitable. So we got the school and the teachers to work with us to combine the programs and we got the school district to support that. And now we have a single program that serves both kids equitably. We need to be working hard from the grassroots level to address these economic disparities that are placed on our neighborhoods which are unjust and unfair.
My question starts with Mr. Burgess and then it goes from left to right. This is about housing. Many members of our community are having a difficult time finding house that can be, that can be afford. What is your definition of affordable housing and what will you do to ensure that immigrants and refugees and communities of color to such housing problem?
So the question was, what would I do to create more affordable housing in the city? I'm a big supporter of what the city council did just earlier this past week when we voted for mandatory commercial affordable housing fees, sometimes referred to as the linkage fee. That means anytime anyone builds a commercial building in the city, like an office building, a hotel, a grocery store, whatever, a commercial, a commercial building, they're going to have to pay into a special fund to build affordable housing. Hundreds of millions of dollars over the next 10 years. And soon, the city council will pass mandatory residential inclusionary zoning. So every time a multifamily, a multifamily building is built, like an apartment building, a number of those units will have to be set aside for low, moderate to low-income individuals, 60% of the area median income or lower. Now, that is, that program is going to create 20,000 units of affordable housing over the next 10 years. And that's an important step. So really, for the first time in Seattle, if you build an apartment building, you have to comply with the building code and the fire safety code. Now you're going to have to comply with the affordable housing code as well. And that's a good positive step. This program has broad support in your community, among labor unions, environmental groups, neighborhood advocates, developers, the business community are all united around this new plan to build much, much more affordable housing.
Was on the mayor's committee, the Hala Committee, the Housing Affordability Committee that came up with what was called the grand bargain to get at that 20,000 units. I voted, I voted to abstain because I felt they did not go far enough. Of those 20,000 units that, you know, Mr. Burgess talked about, only 6,000 of them are going to be affordable to folks who are, you know, very low-income. And the need is closer to 45,000 units, right? So we can obviously be doing much more than that. I put forward a proposal for a robust linkage fee on both residential and, commercial and residential which would bring in $1.2 billion over the next 10 years. The mayor's proposal is about $640 million. Now when you compare those two proposals, we left hundreds of millions of dollars on the table that the private sector could be paying into for more affordable housing. And to speak more specifically to the immigrants and refugees community, one of the things that really disturbed me about the Seattle Housing Authority stepping forward proposal was that the Board of Commissioners specifically singled out the East African community and said, "Well, I think that they can actually afford it," right? And then decided to raise the rents on those folks by 400%. Now, I would like to pass a resolution, if elected, that gave the S.H.A. tenants a say on who's on the S.H.A. Board of Commissioners. Because that was simply a sign of them being completely unaccountable to the people that they're housing and are supposed to be serving. And that way we can put a block on that kind of racist decision-making that was happening at the highest levels.
Said that the inclusionary zoning, which means that developers need to put affordable units, produces some number of units, some number of units. Let's talk about that some number of units. The deal that they made with the developers, 5% of the units. So in a 100-unit building, they will put in five affordable, they will put in five affordable units. We need far more affordable housing. In New York City and Chicago, they demand 20% of the units. Four times as much affordable housing. But the deal they struck with the developers does not give us that. I think what we need to be doing is using the city's bonding capacity. Means the city can get money and the city should be acquiring properties and putting those into community land trusts. And that takes that housing out of the private market. The private market is the market that raises the rents, that takes control over our land, displaces people, and put that into public ownership through community land trusts. The community then can set the rates for the housing, the rents. The city can determine what type of housing stock they want to purchase. And then what happens is the tenants, when they pay their rent, the ownership of that slowly transfers from the city into the community. We need to be, we need to be getting more ownership, community ownership. The second thing is, I want to make a program tied to that so when you pay your rent, a portion of that goes into a pool of money that you keep. And that pool of money allows you to eventually acquire enough money so you can purchase your own unit. It's a rent-to-own plan. It's because the only way that you can protect yourself from increasing rents and displacement is if you own the property.
I'd like to see, a lot of what Bill said is, I agree with. One of the things that we need to do is we need to definitely support inclusionary zoning. We need to enact the Growth Management Act and use it so that we can get the money from the developers. We need to hold the developers and the businesses in Seattle accountable. The businesses in Seattle are importing a lot of people from out of the country and out of, and out of the state and giving them the high-paying jobs. In order to get our, our children to have those jobs, we need to have those jobs, we need to partner with the school district and get them trained so that they can get... We need to look at our entire, our entire city system in a life cycle analysis manner, a complete total life cycle analysis, life cycle analysis. In order to do that, you have to look at it from womb to tomb, from the day the children are born till the day that they retire. And a lot of us are getting close to that. I think that we need to protect the renters and we need to go after the landlords. We have laws on the books that are not being enforced through the housing and health codes and that needs to be really, really emphasized. There is no excuse for an inspector to go in and give a buy-off on a building that's infested with roaches, rats, and the plumbing and the electrical or...
Now pertaining to public safety, our communities are disproportionately represented in our prison systems. What do you think are the reasons for this and how will you work with STIR to address this disproportionality? If we could please start with John Grant and we'll proceed to the left.
So we have a criminal justice system that incarcerates people of color, in particular African-American men, at six times the rate of Caucasians even though they commit the same amount of crimes. This is such a serious injustice. This is what has been commonly called now the new Jim Crow. And we need to actually take steps to undo that racism. I'm opposed to the creation of a new youth jail and I think that we should be devoting resources to mitigate, you know, this, this cycle of recidivism. I really like the city's lead program which is a program that isn't just focusing on enforcement but actually connects folks to social services or to other things that they need to kind of stabilize their situation. But more importantly, what I hear from folks is that they feel disproportionately targeted by the police. And I would like to see something that actually holds officers accountable when there are serious cases of racial profiling. I would like to see civilian oversight over the disciplinary process for officers who are found to have committed racial profiling. Right now, we don't really have that. We have something called a disciplinary review board which is two police officers and one person, a civilian who's chosen by the police department. And it's essentially the police policing themselves. And if we actually want to see a change in behavior and a change in stopping this racial profiling from happening, officers need to know that they'll be held accountable for that behavior. And right now, my opponent, he's been in office for eight years and has had opportunities to actually address this issue. Now we are hearing him support the Community Police Commission's 50-plus recommendations to do just those things. Why has it taken eight years for us to come to that conclusion? We should have been doing this a long time ago.
We could figure that out. Yeah, that was good. So this, I was one of the first local elected officials to speak out on mass incarceration, which is a huge injustice in our country. It is based on racial inequities. It has destroyed families and neighborhoods. It has perpetuated racism and it has not made us safer. So the whole policy of mass incarceration has failed and needs to be turned away. I'm very proud that of the Community Police Commission, 13 individuals that are helping with our police reform process, nine of those 13 individuals have endorsed my reelection. Why? Because they know the work I've been doing to reform the police department in our, form the police department in our city and to improve the administration of criminal justice. But about the last several months, about policing in our city, I actually believe that immigrants who want to be, immigrants who want to be police officers and firefighters should be able to pursue those jobs without first becoming citizens. You can serve in the US military as a fast track to citizenship. Why couldn't you be a firefighter or a police officer in our city as well? That takes a change in state law but we'll be working for that down in Olympia in January. And I know a lot of young people who would love to be in the public safety professions like emergency medical technicians, police officers, firefighters. And I think our city could go a long way in diversifying our public safety forces by allowing those individuals to come in as a fast track.
Thank you. I'm District Seven representative. And I believe that police officers should live in the neighborhoods that they serve. We had, we had a neighborhood police officer on Queen Anne and it was really nice because we knew him as part of our Little League, he was part of our swimming teams. And so we could talk to him and tell him what was going on and he could see how things were, were being affected in the community. And I think that should be the same for all of the different communities. I completely support the Community Police Commission. I think that we need to strengthen it, we need to help it become successful and so that we can have the police officers identified for their behaviors that are negatively impacting the neighborhoods and have them retrained. If they have to be let go, then they have to be let go. And we need to do that on a more regular basis, to do that on a more regular basis. One in eight years is really not a good record. I believe we establish in all of the neighborhoods, including the schools, through the community centers so that they can have, so that they can have an opportunity... centers, so that they can have, so that they can have an opportunity to talk to somebody, to give them guidance. One of the things I'm concerned about is the number of children who are recently immigrated to the country. The culture in the Seattle area is way different than it is in Ethiopia, where it is in Somalia. And so those things need to be addressed. Throwing a child in or a teenager into a brand-new culture is not an easy thing to do. And we need to have advocates, we need to have people to help them assimilate so that they, they can feel safe and...
...level of distrust between the citizens and the police. The police are not necessarily well-received in our communities, and the police do not serve our communities well. It's called de-policing. They don't come. When there are calls, they don't come. Or if there's a call, they come six hours later. I think we need to be rebuilding our police under, we need to be rebuilding our police under a model that we had years ago, which the police had shut down. We need to bring it back. The community service offers are unarmed police, and they are in our communities directly working with the businesses who live there, they walk the beats, they're in the schools, they know the kids. We do not need armed police officers around our children. So I want to see a recreation of this model, recreation of this model, and I would like to see those community service officers hired out of our communities. They should... The police are not our neighbors. The police live outside of the city, and they come in and they occupy our city. They do not treat us with respect. In fact, the Department of Justice identified over 200 cases of excessive use of force. Those police officers still are on the police force today. They should be fired. The people who were beaten by these police have never even been notified that the Department of Justice identified that they were beaten. This is totally unacceptable. Finally, I think that, oh, I lost my train of thought here. I will stop.
From one of our audience, the Filipino community of Seattle is building a new 70-unit affordable housing. What kind of help can you give to FCS if elected? And we'll start with candidate Bill Bradford.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The Filipino community of Seattle is building a new 70-unit affordable housing. What kind of help can you give to FCS if elected?
So, we have, we have lots of needs for housing for poor people. And as I mentioned earlier, the city could be doing far more than what it is. Our, the mayor's proposal, that has been worked out extralegislatively, which means they did it outside of the public process to make these deals, is unacceptable. We need to make, making sure that when we get housing monies, when we get housing projects, that the community has a bigger voice in what happens. I think that we can be providing far more supportive funds to projects like that. We should be using the city's bonding capacity to facilitate the production of this housing. The Hala report depends on the market to provide, depends on the market to provide housing. And the market does not serve lower levels, from Hala, does not deliver nearly enough. So we could be channeling money to nonprofits far more than we do today. I have supported a number of nonprofit projects in my neighborhood. The problem is, is that when they produce the housing, they don't make it all, produce the housing, they don't make it always affordable to the levels we need. As John mentioned earlier, the vast majority of the need for affordable housing is at what they call 50% of median income and below. Hala does not even be what we need in this community. We are in a housing, affordable housing crisis, and the amount of housing, affordable housing that Hala recommends is equal to what we're supposed to be doing when everything's regular. We are in a crisis, we need to be producing affordable housing far faster. We should be using our bonding capacity, we should be purchasing buildings, and making sure that those, those buildings are owned by the community and the rent levels set by the community.
We would partner with a lot of different nonprofit housing providers to try to preserve affordable housing. You know, some of the best partnerships we had were with organizations that focused on particular communities, especially in the immigrant and refugee community. And I think that when the city partners with those nonprofits and works within that community to decide and determine, you know, what are the priorities of that community? Where we want this housing to be located? Where are the best areas of opportunity for it to be located? What the city can do to help is to provide, you know, low-interest loans, use funding from the Seattle Housing Levy, leverage resources from the Seattle Housing Authority to, to kind of buy down rental units so that they're more affordable for folks. The city has all these resources that need to be used in strategic ways to make sure that we don't, that we can have an integrated and racially diverse city. People of color are disproportionately being pushed out of this, color are disproportionately being pushed out of this city because of rising rents. And the city is directly implicated in that. And we need to partner with those nonprofit housing providers that work within those specific communities so that we can make sure that we're still economically diverse city. And so the city has to partner with the community and the community nonprofit housing providers to make sure that those units are there and the resources are there when, when the city's approached to actually make that happen. So I would be a very strong proponent of increasing those resources, like doubling the Seattle Housing Levy, using revenue from this proposed linkage fee that we're talking about, and actually making sure that they're directed to the communities that are most likely to face displacement, which again is immigrants and refugees, people of color, in particular the African-American community. So that's, that's what I would do if I was on city council. I would want to work with you all, work with the community, to make sure that that displacement does not happen, to make sure that that displacement...
In a number of ways. First, we could apply our multifamily tax exemption law and waive the property tax on some of the units if they are serving people at a certain income level or below. We could apply funds that are given to the city from developers, development fees that we charge today, and development fees that we charge today, and we'll be receiving millions more once we finish the work that the council's doing right now on affordable housing. Some of those funds could go to assist with construction. We could help with credits that are possible because of providing low-income housing. So I would encourage the Filipino community to reach out to the Office of Housing in the city. They have strategic advisors there who, they have strategic advisors there who could walk through the specifics and how to tap into by now. And we do, in fact, Seattle pioneered the partnership between the city government and nonprofit organizations building affordable housing way back when we first passed the Seattle Housing Levy, 12 years ago, I believe it was. And that comes up on the ballot next year for reconsideration, and the council is going to significantly increase that as well.
Here from the Filipino community. Okay. So what the first thing I would do as a city councilperson is sit down with the Filipino community, okay? And find out exactly what you need. I don't want to guess what you need, I want to hear it from your lips. As far as the housing situation, the housing unit that you're, that you're building, that's extremely commendable. I don't know exactly what you need, I would want to find out what you need. And as Tim's, I'm sorry, as Mr. Burgess said, we would be able to point you or point the organization to the correct offices that are available in the city. And as a councilperson representing a district, I would make myself available to you so that I could help walk you through getting to those correct offices, because it can be a myriad of confusion. So that's what I would do.
Thank you. Last but not least, this will be the last question that I need to, yes or no? And then after that, I will ask you candidates to remain seated so that you can take a picture with the leadership of STARC. Are you committed to meet with STARC leadership within 60 days of the election to review STARC advocacy goals and objectives? Yes or no?
I'm trying to speak to you. Do you want to read that one more time?
Are you committed to meet with STARC leadership with 60 days of the election to review STARC advocacy goals and objectives? Yes or no?
I'll meet with you now, I'll meet you within 30 days. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, we have White Center annexation, why or why not? And may we please start with Deborah, and then go ahead to Greg.
Does White Center want to be annexed? So I would want, I would want White Center to vote on whether they want to be annexed or not. Greenwood kind of got talked in, Greenwood kind of got talked into it, and they still don't have the sidewalks they were promised. I would, I would want White Center to say yes or no before even going down that road.
Yes, I do favor annexation of White Center into Seattle. We're in a process right now for annexation of what's called the Sliver by the River, which is the south side of the South Park Bridge and the industrial Duwamish Triangle. That is going to be scheduled for a vote for the people who live in those two little areas next year, in 2016. And the city's on a course that probably in 2017, at the earliest, the residents of the North High Line area, which is the White Center area, would be able to vote whether they want to join the city of Seattle. It is their choice. They had a vote two years ago for joining the city of Burien, and they voted no. So they remain an unincorporated area of King County. But the city is going to give them that opportunity, and I personally would welcome them to be new members of the Seattle family.
I view it as a race and social justice issue. This is a very diverse community, and it is a real problem that they are not getting the basic services that they need, you know, access to emergency services, roads, infrastructure. I mean, these are really important issues that that community has been denied by being unincorporated. And so I think we absolutely should welcome them as a part of the city of Seattle so that they can be fully incorporated and receive all the benefits that come, coming to the city. So I think that it's a strong race and social justice issue that the city should support.
Of White Center because of the positive benefits that John alluded to. I am concerned about the annexation because I'm afraid of the potential displacement and gentrification of the community. Many of the people that are pushing for the annexation are people who want to try and make Seattle, make that part of Seattle because of the value and the cachet or the advantage of being recognized as part of Seattle, and the increase in property value that comes with that. What I'm worried about is that brings along with it gentrification and displacement. So I think if we move forward with this, we need to be very careful to make sure that we are not displacing people out of that community and that we don't see rapid development that like we've seen in other neighborhoods, to come and take advantage of people who are living there.
This is a new idea that's been presented in the last few months. I know that there's a couple of cities in the United States that do this today and allow immigrants who are here but are not yet citizens to vote in local municipal elections. I haven't taken a position yet on that, I need to learn more about how that would work, how those individuals would be registered to vote and to participate in our elections. But it's certainly something worthy of consideration.
I firmly believe in full amnesty for undocumented people in this country generally. Like, we should be breaking down every barrier for every resident that's living here and not create artificial boundaries for folks based on their, you know, citizenship. I fully support every opportunity to enfranchise folks who are not a part of the electoral system, and would be a strong supporter of making sure that immigrants and refugees, regardless of their documented status, are able to vote in this country or in this city.
I too support it. Back in January of this year, I committed to Hillary Stern, who runs Casa Latina, who presented the idea to me. I think it sounds like a great idea because you are paying taxes here, you are using the services here, and you should have every right to have your voice heard and be empowered through the political process. We already have a disproportionate unfairness in our society, as we've already talked about, and anything we can do to correct that is important, and this is one very valuable tool for that. Thank you.
I would have to agree with Tim. I do not know enough about it, so I would have to learn more. What I am concerned about is the people who, the immigrants, actually refugees, from Cambodia and Vietnam who came here 40-plus years ago, who, especially the women, who came over here illiterate in their own language, and as a result, have not been able to become U.S. citizens after 40-plus years. So these women have been disenfranchised, they're here, they're here legally, and they're, they still don't have the right to vote, because they cannot take the exam, study for it and take it. So we, there's a lot of disparity, and it's not just for people who are here undocumented, but it's also for people who are here who are documented. So I would need to, I would need to study that more.